We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number Thirteen, School Board Meeting for Tuesday, March 12th, 2019. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Laura, if you would, roll call, please.
Mueller, here. Severson, here. Larkin?
Here.
Lewis, here. Samurai, here. Palmer, here. Superintendent Kathy Kelly, here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda, adjustments and announcements. We'll start with a motion to move that forward for approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Paul?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements, March 18th through the 22nd, there'll be no school at spring break. March 26th, at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. April 5th, there'll be no school, it's a grading day, and April 9th, at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting again here in the community room. Next up would be the correspondence, Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be communication to the board, citizen and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take act, will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Okay, no one here for that, so we'll keep moving. Next up would be the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report, minutes of the February 12th, and 26th, school board meetings, and then Lane changes. If I get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Natty?
Second.
Laura? Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up would be discussion reports, information items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since their last regularly scheduled meeting. Laura, would you mind going first?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. I want to talk about the Fine Arts Night. That, it was an amazing, an amazing experience. I mean, there were so many kids involved and the staff, and it was well, I mean, just executed beautifully, all the performances. It was, it was really an incredibly enjoyable experience and, and I highly recommend that when we do it again next year, and I'm certainly hoping that it'll be a third year in a row, that more people will come and participate. It's great to raise money for the Music Foundation as well, and that was great. The other thing that I did was I actually attended a 916 board meeting as well. So, and we did some group exercises, and it was, it was really pretty interesting. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it for me.
Paul?
Yeah. So, we had the work session last week.
Mm-hmm.
Was that last week? Yeah, that was last week.
Last week.
And then I talked to a number of community members, I attended the conferences at the high school, and then we had our committee on community engagement.
Thank you. Molly?
Yeah, I attended the work session last week as well, and high school conferences, as well as Columbia Academy conferences, both were well-attended. I attended a couple of the Boys Varsity Playoff Basketball Games, they did a great job for a very young team, and also had a chance to watch the sixth grade theater performances today at Columbia Academy, they did a really good job. That was fun. That's it.
Cool. Lauren?
Sure. I went to the high school band concert. I also had a meeting with Superintendent Kelly, conversations with a couple of parents. I also attended both the high school and the Columbia Academy conferences. I attended Performing Arts Night, and I echo Laura, I still get goosebumps thinking about that performance. Those performances, they did a great job, and those teachers did, they were amazing. So, kudos to the students and staff for that. And then also attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement just before this meeting.
I also had, attended the work session last week, went to a chair meeting just prior to this meeting, and also went to the community, the Subcommittee for Community Engagement, had conversations with community members, but also the highlight of my last week was the Performing Arts Night, not just because I had a kid performing, but because it was choir from both the high school and the middle school, and bands, including the jazz bands, and they had art for the Sister City Art Competition, and the kids had the theme of resilience. So it was, right, those, right, resilience, yeah, and that's, it was really interesting to see how each of the students interpreted that, and it was really, said something about the quality of kids we have in our schools, and just the fun things the kids were able to do to celebrate Black History Month in their, in their, through the art, so it was really, really a fun week.
I also attended the High School Band Concert, conferences, chair meeting, work session last week, and for the record, Laura was at the work session, too.
Yeah.
I was being the first person to go, yeah, forgot about that. So, I was also at the Fine Arts Performance, and I want to give a special shout out to the boosters, that, our boosters, that put that all together, that was a lot of work, 170 kids, somewhere in the neighborhood of, fed them all, and then they performed, and we had people that showed up, you know, to share the meal ahead of time and then enjoy the performance. It was a lot of fun, and, so, nice job, I don't know that people realize how much work goes into that, so, kudos to everybody for that. And, that's all I got. Next up would be the superintendent, if in fact you have a report.
Chair Larkin, and members, I do. It's short. The National Country Music Association Foundation has indicated that Columbia Heights Public Schools will become a collaborative partner with them beginning in 2019. Currently, we're working out the details on what that partnership might entail. We believe that they'll be making a monetary contribution initially and in long term. We believe that they will be sending representatives from the Country Music Association to New York to videotape the New York City Seminar, and perhaps for us to meet some of their official members of the Country Music Association. And then, we're also going to be invited to, in the, in the longer term, some of the concerts that are sponsored by the Country Music Association and US Bank throughout the year, as, as people come to the, to the venues in the area. One really kind of fun emerging part of this is in addition to their staff coming out and filming the, the trip, we also have a member, a student member in the Communications Department who will be, be coming along under the guidance of our Director of Communications, and the Country Music Association would like to link with this individual and see what they can do together. So it's turning into just a, a really kind of fun start to that trip, and I think we'll have many, many memories, both from the Country Music Association and from the work of our Communications Department, both student and at the director level, on, on things that we can bring back and share. And I, I think what we are going to try to do with that is broadcast that on the television program internally to see what's going on with the trip. So, we'll see, we have the equipment, we'll see if it works. Another special thanks is to Northeast Bank. Last week, Director of Finance Denise Sunstrom and I were presented with a check for $6,750 to support the ongoing curriculum that we have in finance in the business office at the high school. Larry Petrick started that years ago, and it's embedded in our curriculum, but it takes a big chunk of money to keep renewing the software and things like that. So they presented us with the check, and they also said that, starting this year, their foundation has decided that they would have a scholarship for one student at the high school for the next five years in, in memory of Larry Petrick and his contributions to our school and, and, and to the community. So that was special thanks to them as well. So that was touching and, and nice all at the same time. I was, the highlight of my week was really attending the Performing Arts Night on last Friday, and I, it was moving and memorable to me all at the same time, when I was in the auditorium and surrounded by the students singing, and the band students, it was just, it was, it was like hundreds of voices because the audience came into, it brought goosebumps. And I, this doesn't happen because we had both visual and performing artists exhibiting themselves very well without a lot of support. And I know everybody's thanked the music boosters, I want to thank them again, and I also want to particularly thank Lori and Mueller, because this was her brainchild two years ago, and I truly believe that it's going to be a legacy event that will provide, get bigger and bigger and bigger. The Sister Cities have been in it since the beginning as well, and to see all that art, and then they gave out gifts and awards at the end, was wonderful, and the students involved were outstanding, so special thanks to everybody involved with that. And lastly, the New York City Seminar leaves Columbia Heights on March 23rd, and will return at the end of the next week, and so we're looking forward to all the events being planned, and that also wouldn't happen without the support of the Columbia Heights Music Boosters and the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters, because they've really been instrumental in allowing the students going, to have fundraising opportunities, to raise money for this trip, because it's, it's a, it's a push for everybody, and the boosters for their flat-out support, so, both boosters for their flat-out support, so, thank you for that, because I think that we are reaching our goal, and it wouldn't be without the help of all the collaborative partners around the table. So, I've had multiple contacts with school board members and been at meetings, and I want to thank all of you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. All good news. Well, so, next up, we were slated to have a legislative update, Senator Lane, Representative Kunisch-Podin, and Representative Bernardi were scheduled to be here tonight to give us an update. They were unable to attend due to legislative hearings, so we will not be hearing from them tonight. Next up on the agenda is the K-12 Activities Update. I believe Antoine, you're up. And Jake?
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It is our honor to be here today to go over our fall and winter update for activities and athletics. Myself, Antoine Harris, is the Activities Director, and beside me is my partner in crime, Jake Henderson, Activities Manager. So I wanted to bring him along, so he could have an opportunity to enjoy this with me. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunities for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Core values, community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Football, it was a, it was a great football season this year. The season highlights, we won our homecoming game, which was, which was huge, the kids had a great time. We went undefeated at home, and we also made it to the section semifinal game, which was a very exciting game to be, it was a bit cold outside, but it worked out pretty good. Football honors, all district, Antonio Triplet, Ben Rigaske, Isaac Becker, Kenny Moore. Our all-district honorable mentions was Brandon Klein, Aaron Severson, Noah Servio, and Amir Davis. The Why We Play Award was won by Ben Rigaske, which is a sportsmanship award. Parents' Night, this was an opportunity to take some photos with our, with our parents, with our students, and it was, it was a good turnout, so I wanted to make sure we recognized our parents this year for so much support during our football season. Homecoming, as you know, like I say that we won. I put the photo of the fireworks because that night, it was a foggy night, and so it was tough to see the fireworks that night, and so this was the best photo that we shot. It came through when the wind was blowing a little bit, so I thought it was pretty cool to put in there, so. Community service, that night also, I had an opportunity to present Bill Streff with a service award. Bill Streff was here for numerous decades and, and gave a lot of his time and his effort and his hard work to our department, as well as the district itself. As I'm on the field handing him his plaque, he grabbed my hand, and he looks at me and says, "Don't screw this up," and I said, "I won't, I promise." So we had, we had a good talk out there, but he turned over the concessions to Jake and myself, and so, so far, so good, so things are going well. And on the right side, that's my security team right there, we were out in the rain, so our photographer decided to take a picture, so I put that up there, so.
I'll speak up here, Jake Henderson, the Activities Manager. Chair Larkin, Kathy Kelly, Superintendent, and members of the board, thank you for having me. I'm going to take tennis here, so we've got a couple of highlights. They beat Washington Tech, we had Vanessa Mora as all-conference, and Siring Nima Belaskaya and Hannah Severson as honorable mentions. I'll keep going with a couple of pictures. Our coach Jenny is really great at taking these girls out and getting them to see the world and making connections with them outside of just the court. So this was a road trip to Winona, they went and saw Winona State, and then I think, if you click one more, yeah, they, they got to visit some parks and, and just connect in a different way, so, pretty cool opportunity for them. She's also really great at taking pictures, and we have a nice little, I think maybe Natty also has one, a calendar for, from all of the, all the pictures that she took, so. I will keep going, we've got a couple of things up here, just highlighting girls swim and dive, Melissa Hosh earned all-conference, and Izzy Riden and Anya Erickson honorable mention. Just recently, our boys' state diving competition, David Abram, this is the first time that he was there. Aaron Severson was really close, I think one, one spot away from making, making state, but David competed, took 23rd, but the coaches are really excited, he's only in 10th grade, he's got a couple more years, and they're really excited about the progress that he's made and, and the opportunity that he has, and the experience that he had that going to state.
Just a, a quick note about that day, sitting in the pool area, as you know, it's pretty hot in there, and he had an opportunity, the top 20 will make it on to the, the final round, and so he had an, David had an opportunity to get there, so it was very suspenseful. He did a great job, and he was very, very close, so being a 10th grader, we have a couple more years of him diving, so I, I will assume he will be there and do very well.
Finally, girls' soccer, Brianna Jorgensen took all-conference, I think for the second year in a row, and Emily Reynolds and Jenna Ovia Lapa were honorable mention.
Wait, 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 yep, yep, yep.
And boys' soccer, for the second year in a row, we have an all-state recipient, this time Abdul Salem Rigassa, and he also got all-conference, obviously, and Cristo Serrano was recognized for all-conference, too. And adaptive soccer, some highlights, Alex Alchow, just a goal machine, got all-conference. I, I've seen him for two seasons now, and I think he's up 15-plus goals. Molly, you might know the exact amount, but, I don't know, he scores multiple goals every single game. It's, it's super fun to watch. And then honorable mentions were Giovanna Tajoner and Sophia Ali.
Bowling, as you know, we, we do have a bowling program that we're attached to, and the kids do a very good job. It's very competitive bowling, we have high school and middle school students, it's a coed group, and five of the bowlers, bowlers lettered this year. We have a lot of middle school students that are involved, so I can see this program continuing to grow. Gymnastics, gymnastics was, they had a great season, they scored, you know, higher in some of the areas that they did in the previous year. Participation doubled since last year, which is a sign of growth. Our varsity lineup included several middle school gymnasts, and so that's, that's also a sign of growth and fun to see, that we're getting the opportunity for not just the high school students, but the middle school students to get truly involved. We, we've changed our facility from a gym in Minneapolis to Gleason's out in Brooklyn Center, and what had, what that's done is it allowed our student athletes to have more access to more pieces of equipment and better equipment, so I think they're gaining from that as well. Volleyball, all-conference honorable mentions, um, second.
Amelia Laurier.
Amelia Laurier and Katie Rockwell. Girls' basketball, our girls' basketball team also is young, we have a lot of young athletes here that are participating. All-conference was Destiny Vaughn, Amelia Laurier is honorable mention, and so was Sakira Howard Reynolds. Boys' basketball, they made it to the section semifinals last night. It was a good game early on, you know, they showed their youth, of course, but they competed very well this year, and I expect them to rebound next year with a lot of returning guys coming back to play. Jordan Jones was all-conference, Muja Burton was honorable mention, and Spencer Alvarez was honorable mention.
I'll come back in here with the dance team. We had, our head coach was on maternity leave for almost the entire season, and so we had Ms. Humple from the middle school who took over as head coach for the season, did an awesome job, and we're really excited to have a, a team of coaches for that next year. But we've got a couple of student athletes to recognize, all-conference, Estrella Ortiz, and then Taria Smith and Melanie Martinez were honorable mention. And then because this just isn't about high school, we had, we had some really great things happening at our elementary and middle school. Destination Imagination at Highland Elementary under Amber Young. She got third place in the medical mystery challenge and has qualified for state, which is pretty awesome, and I know that they were really excited about that. Our robotics team won the promote video award under the, a new direction of Ariel Orcutt down at the middle school. We had a longtime person at the middle school that did a great job building that program, and so she has taken it over, and Mr. Kennedy did come in a couple of times to help out, but, and just make sure things were getting off on the right foot, but we're excited about what they can do next year, too. And then our future problem solvers, actually, at the high school, did just qualify for state as well, and will be going there at the end of the month.
Our spring musical, it's Beauty and the Beast. I was very excited about the casting of it, we have 45 students that are involved, which is a large number, so I'm, I'm very excited about what's, what's about to transpire. Our scheduled performances, April 25th, April 26th, April 28th, as well as May 3rd, 4th, and 5th, so look forward to seeing all of you there at one of the other.
I'll highlight back on the middle school musical, too, was really well-attended. We have zero stats on how many people might have attended, but I'm told from our director that it was more than she's ever had, so, and far more, so it was, it was really cool to see. Finally, my final piece here is, I'm excited to share with you our program evaluation for-
It should be in your packet as well, the piece that he's sharing right now.
For our high school athletics, this is something new that we're doing this year, and the, the goal really is that we are working with our varsity head coaches to grow their programs and to improve their programs every single year. And so what we do is we evaluate four components. The first one is participation, retention, and multi-sport rates. So essentially, are we meeting our roster targets for all teams, inspiring athletes to return the following season, and promoting multi-sport engagement or multi-activity engagement? The second component is grade point average. Are all students throughout the program achieving high scholastic standards in the classroom? Essentially, we're looking there at their cumulative GPA. The third component is the Student Athlete Survey. Are we engaging our students in developing competence, confidence, connections, and character? And then finally, our competition and performance. Is our varsity team performing competitively in the conference and the section? And so really, I think what we're doing here is we're redefining what our athletic program success means, and so all of these components are important, and it's not just how they perform out on the field, in the pool, or on the court, but all of these things are important to us. And so this tool really allows us to identify positives in the program and areas for improvement. And so what we do is we sit down with the coaches afterwards, and we identify those positive components, and we identify the components that need some improvement, and then we try to keep those score, those components that they scored high, we want those to remain high, and then we come up with a plan for getting the other components high as well. And so our goal here is that our head coaches are building a strong seven-through-12 program. And a little side note, I am working with Tara Lawrence at the middle school to create not just an athletic piece, but one of these program evaluations for the Performing Arts, too. And so I'm excited to work on that with her. And then, and also, this, this is something that I really get excited about, there's a lot of numbers involved, and then, former math teacher, and then also, I have my master's in coaching, and so this is, this is right up my alley, and I love the, the, the challenge of trying to improve our programs and, and our activities department every single, every single year, and, and this just puts it on paper so that we can, we can have a goal, I said, essentially, so.
So, as you can hear, Jake has a real passion behind this program scorecard, and I think it's, it'll, you know, like he stated, it'll give us an opportunity to make sure our coaches and our students are heard, and they have an opportunity to grow in all areas, instead of just the athletic part, instead of just the performance part, so I think it's, it's huge. And so we, we are seeing some, some real communication involved between the high school, between our coaches, and between our students, to get those scorecards the way they should be, so I'm, I'm excited about it. Any questions about that at all? Anybody have any questions?
It's really been a good thing that we've just used as a, a good conversation starter. This is, it's not, we're coming down and here's your score, this is, this is something that we're working together on trying to figure out and get better.
What he's trying to say is, one of us plays good cop, bad cop, kind of thing, so that's what happens. I'll let you guess which is which.
Yeah, I'm looking at this sheet in our board packet, I don't know if you guys have seen this, it's, it's nice to have some clear expectations laid out for coaches for all of these areas, and I think it's great that it's robust, and it's just considering the win and loss, but that that's in there, too, that they're competing well, so, it's great.
Yeah, it's making them a, a well-rounded student because they're being held accountable, and not just the coaches, but the kids for grades and a lot of the other things that we look for that, you know, the, the, some of the other life skill stuff that we consistently work at in our district, so, thanks, I love it, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I just wanted to say, too, thank you to both of you, I know that you got a, you got a big job over there, and there's a lot of students that are participating in all of these activities, and I think it's great to have those opportunities, and your leadership and, and helping manage that, really seeing the great participation and opportunities for our students, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Lastly, as you, you all may know, we lost a great coach, a great individual, great person, Russell Gary. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention his name and what he's done. He gave us 15 years of service within the district, he started in 2004, a track and field, and he also was an urban liaison for three years in the district. He was well-respected with our students, with our coaches, he pushed the students very hard for them to be great, for them to reach the goals that they wanted, and he was a very kind and considerate individual, so I wanted to show some respect to him for the work that he's done for us.
Thank you, Antoine.
Thanks.
Welcome. Any questions at all? Anything else? Anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I saw someone come in, so we're gonna circle back to our legislative update. We have Representative Connie Bernardi that's here.
Thank you. I didn't know, since I was tardy, I apologize for being tardy. I did have a hearing tonight, and I did finagle my way to be the first one on the docket. And so I was able to make it now, so please accept my apology, and I'm so glad I stopped in.
You're all good. Welcome.
Thank you. So, I like learning from you guys, but just to let you know, just real briefly, at the Capitol, things are going a mile a minute. Usually start early in the morning and then get home pretty late at night. So we're taking it really fast this year. And you probably know there's a huge commitment for education and from pre-K to higher education. And I, and we're trying to get as much as we can for K-12 because we want to keep the quality of our schools and the opportunities for our students. So we're gonna try our best. And there's all important factors that play into that. And one of them is the package that the governor proposed, proposed a funding package as well as a spending package. And I just share both sides of it because just give you two numbers in the side of the funding package. There was a comprehensive transportation package. And whether people like it or not, I want people to understand that a half a billion dollars comes out of the general fund that no longer needs to be spent on transportation. So instead of kicking the can down the road and funding transportation through the general fund means that it becomes competitive with education funding. So the governor's proposing the transportation package that would include taking out a half a billion dollars out of the general fund for, and I should say this better. A half a billion dollars for transportation would no longer be spent on the general fund. It would be spent in his budget proposal for the transportation package, freeing up a half a billion dollars that could be used on education and other important things in the state. So it's important to share the whole package because if it doesn't all go together, that means half a billion dollars is not freed up for, be able to fund education. And the other one is called a provider sales tax, which has been funding people to be able to get health coverage and preventative health, preventative health initiatives. And that's almost a billion dollars, and that, that tax sunsets. So that, if the tax doesn't get renewed, it's been around for quite a while now. It seems like ten or fifteen years, I do not know. But if that does not get funded, that puts a billion, almost a billion dollars of pressure on the general fund that won't be able to spend on things like education. So I share that whole package with you. And pleased to report that I serve on the higher education committee as a chair this year. And first time serving as a chair, and I'm absolutely loving it. And my favorite part of the job is representing my constituents. And I consider you my constituents because I represent Columbia Heights School District, Frehley School District, Spronley Park School District, Noka Henepin, and Mounds U. School District. So my passion is education. And things that might touch on this area as well, that's not exactly education, is our roadways along University Avenue, as well as Central Avenue can be very dangerous for, for people. And I'm working on a corridor study and engineering evaluation and some safety audits that are, have been started and trying to continue funding to address those issues. Because too many people, in one, on University Avenue, in a certain section of about a mile and a half or so, there was, in an eighteen-month period, there was nine fatalities. And that's just like, that's like almost an epidemic. And so we're addressing those at the Capitol, and that affects people in the community, walking to school and moving about. So we want to keep people safe. So wanted to share those things with you and hear from you, what you want me to be working on and what would be helpful to you and what you'd like, the proud moments you'd like to share with me. And I'm glad I was able to see the presentation, got tears in my eyes. I'm like, do I have to take a tissue out? But so proud of the students and all the mentors and coaches and people that helped them reach their full potential and their creativity and, and discover their talents.
Do we have any questions or stories?
I should've said, I'm Connie Bernardi in the state where he's headed for District Forty-one, Forty-one A. And it rep, and I'd mentioned all the school district it represents, so and you're all a part of that.
I forgot to mention this in my update, but I went to AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and they had some of your colleagues come in and talk to us about what's happening in funding education and talked about the potential this year for some relief to the special education cross-subsidy. Is that moving along? And then some percentage increase, I think it was, was it three and two or two and three? Do you remember? It was in the board packet.
Three and two. I believe it's three and two.
Yeah.
Right.
Any movement on that? And then the, the state-funded pre-K, are we, where are we at on those? Those would be my three questions.
Okay, so thank you for those questions. The, if I can remember them all, but the first one, yes, I can't remember if it's like seventy-seven million dollars being proposed for the cross-subsidy. And for people, you, you all know about that, but what that means to the public is that our students in special education receive the services they need, and the funding ought to come with it. And if the funding doesn't come with it, it affects, it affects the whole budget of the school district. So trying to increase that, and it won't, it won't totally, what do you call it? It won't totally fund it, but it would be incrementally, hopefully, we can get there. Because as, and you probably, to let people know this, do, but the federal government hasn't upheld their commitment to funding it. And so it follows basically what the state can provide and local, the local school districts and paying for those services. And then you mentioned the three and two in the formula, which is the most flexible funding for school district. I'm sure you appreciate that very much. And I really, it needs to be three and two. I'd like to see more, but that helps keep up with inflation, but not really for a school district because it's so heavily staff-driven and with health insurance costs and all those things. Your inflationary increases aren't, are probably above the CPI that we usually use for costs, whatever. How do you, the CPI, the Commercial Price Index or something, education? I don't know what education, I know the higher education inflationary rate is three point seven. So I imagine that educate twelve is similar to that. And then the early childhood, I will say that what's at jeopardy mostly this year is the school readiness plus. And I looked at Columbia Heights's numbers. I'm like, I called the super, I sent the superintendent note, and I'm like, need you down here to testify. But then I found out Columbia Heights is protected because you guys got the first round of funding, and that money was protected. And then the second round of money that was called kindergarten readiness plus, that's at jeopardy for a number of school district. Four thousand kids, there's thirty-one hundred and sixty kids. I just had the, I'm carrying the bill on this legislation. Thirty-one hundred and sixty kids are secure in their funding, and that includes Columbia Heights School District. And then there's another four thousand students that, slots for students that are at jeopardy because the funding ends in May. They had two years worth of funding and trying to make that funding permanent. And I'm happy to say it's in the governor's budget. I'm carrying that bill. I had a hearing today. It has really bipartisan support. I've been working on the funding for this as Superintendent Kelly has done a lot of testifying on all the kindergarten and early childhood issues. And as I learned from her, these are essential. And that's the word I was thinking when I think of Kathy, these are, Superintendent Kelly, these are essential for our students. And so that should go through. It won't directly impact Columbia Heights, but I think it helps keep a commitment towards voluntary pre-kindergarten programs for the most targeted, needed, the students that need it the most.
We only need about six million of that cross-subsidy, so if you can swing that over our way, that would.
Is that the disparity of the gap in funding?
We're looking more like seven, I think, isn't that?
Yeah. As we forecast ahead, it will be closer to six or seven. Right now, I think for last year, it was right around five point two. That's roughly between, that's right around seventy FTEs, full-time, eight-staff equivalencies. And I thank the legislature for thinking about helping us take a bite out of that because it really does impact the undesignated and unassigned general fund. And if the federal government would live up to some of its obligations, too, that would be great because we want all of our kids to be supported. So thank you for.
You're welcome.
Laura?
I, I actually have two questions about two, two things that are. One is the, the innovation grant that's with regards to mental health. And I heard that there was some risk of losing that, those monies. And they were using the, the grants to be able to provide mental health services in the schools, specifically more of your, your nine-sixteens and two-eighty-sevens and, you know. And I heard that there was a risk of that. Have you heard anything about that?
I have not heard about that, but shoot me an email because I didn't bring my paper up with me, and I can look into that and get an answer for you.
And then the other ones were the, the other, the other question I had was about the safe school grants. Now, we did receive two of those. We were, we were very fortunate, two of our schools. But I do know that there were something like four or six hundred or a thousand different applications that didn't get filled as well. There's lots of schools that need upgrades and safety. And I was wondering if there's any movement on being able to, to fund that program and to be able to make it available to.
I can check into that for you as well. And, and the important part to share, too, is, since the governor came out with his budget, there's been a new forecast made that we have to use at the legislature. And I preferred the November forecast better because it was better projection. So at the legislature, we don't get to be like the federal government in deficit spend or stimulus spend or whatever. We have to balance our budget for what we get in and what we spend. And so the forecast went down about five hundred million dollars. The governor had like seven hundred million some on the bottom line. I'm guessing he was anticipating that that was coming. So his budget fits into what he had proposed, but with very little flexibility on the bottom line. It's showing, we, this is why education is so important because we need a workforce that's skilled, that gets a great education, that continues their education through all their life. And that's why investment in education is so important and that we're a very welcoming community, and we get as many people that are wanting to come to Minnesota as possible because that's where our success lies, is the, the people who contribute to Minnesota through their talents and skills in our workforces and our nonprofits, and which are part of the workforce. But just, we need, to be a robust state, we need to make sure that everybody's getting the education they need. So I want to thank you for the education you give the scholars here in Columbia Heights Schools.
Anybody else? I have a question.
Sure.
Probably the, what your thoughts are on where it's gonna actually end up. And that is, with all the snow days that we had this year, and all that, things are kind of moving through, and there's some difference of opinion on what the end result should be. Do you have any thoughts on that or any guesses on where you think that's gonna end up?
I kind of feel like that's gonna have some movement this year to bring some, I don't know if you, if you call it relief, it would, it would be helpful. Is that something that would be helpful to the school district?
Yeah, absolutely. If, at least for this year. I mean, we're, yeah, short on contact days and, yeah, there's some type of movement. And I don't remember who it was, but one was more generous than the other. But either one of those, if there was some relief on the number of days that we have to account for, some type of relief would be beneficial for us personally.
Okay, good to know. I don't remember missing these kind of days when I was young, but I remember the snow being similar to this when I was younger. But that has been.
I think it's the cold days that have, actually, the polar vortex days that have been the real tough ones for schools.
I would, I would agree, Representative Bernardi, because it's like you can plow the snow and get the roads clear or try to, and you can get the buses through. But when you have the polar vortex days, like I think the January days, the three in January, when it's a wind chill of thirty-five below and the temperature is like twenty-five, and the buses are the diesel fuel, fuelless sludges, we can, we can have the schools open, but we can't get the children here safely. And it's, it's a, it's a real conundrum to us how to do that. And so it seems like it's happening more often than not. But the three in January were really unexpected, and at least some relief for the, the vortex days in January would be certainly welcomed. Anything else with relief would be great, but for the three in January, not only for this district, but for other districts around. I think it's, it's hard because you need to put the children first, but you also need to have, and their safety, but you also need to have them in school, and you need the aid for them as well. So just something to think about for.
Definitely important. Thank you.
Anybody else? Want to talk about that? She asked for highlights. You said you wanted, we're peppering you with questions. I figured we'd maybe share some positive, other positive stuff. Superintendent had some stuff in her update tonight that I thought I'd ask her to share with you.
Okay.
Well, you know how we love, Representative Bernardi, you know how we love partnerships? And so we're sending the students to New York, again, the New York City Seminar. His study seminar is coming up at the end of, well, the third week in March. And along with that, we'll have a collaborative partner. We just announced that the National Country Music Association will become a partner with Columbia Heights Public Schools, both short-term and long-term. And they will be coming along and meeting us in New York and sending a film crew and doing some video opportunities with the students and collaborating with our communications department. And one of our communications students on presenting that trip. They also are going to invest in the long-term in some of the music and performing arts things in the district. And they, and that is still, we're working out the details in that. They would like to invest, and then they would also like to invest in the long-term with when country music artists come to town, that they would like to send our students to their shows and also have songwriters and country music artists come out and work with our children in the, in the schools. And so we just announced that it's, it's just an awesome partnership. We're very happy about that. And then we're also lucky to work with Northeast Bank, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And we all remember and love Larry Petrick. And his, his big thing was that students should know stuff about finances before they graduate from high school. So he started our original financial curriculum over in the business department. And so they refunded that at about a little over six thousand dollars for the next couple of years. And they're gonna start a scholarship in his honor for the next five years for a student at the high school. So we've had two really great partnerships that have come in just recently.
Wow, that says a lot for what they think of our students here in the school districts. So congratulations, and thanks for your leadership making that happen.
Well, thank to everybody, everybody at the table. And I want to say, I also, we are blessed in this community to have magnificent support from our music boosters, from the school board, and from the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters. And so we couldn't do it without good governance and without phenomenal, phenomenal community support.
Excellent.
I don't know if you were here for part of Antoine's presentation, but he, we have our spring musical coming up. Were you here for that part?
Yes, Beauty and the Beast.
Yep.
Right.
And you wrote the dates down, so I don't have.
No, I didn't have my notebook with me, and I usually have my camera, but I left it at home today. That was crazy. And I want to take a picture of it, but I, it was like the twenty-fifth, sixth, eighth.
Twenty.
We'll, we'll email.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that looked awesome. I have some little kids in my life that I'd like to bring with me.
You'd love it. It's a big cast this year. It'll be fun, be a lot of fun, so. Love to have you come back for that, so. Anybody else have anything they want to share with Representative Bernardi?
Thanks for being an advocate for education.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck with your bill, and thank you for standing up and supporting education. It's greatly appreciated, it really is.
You are welcome. And I serve on the Legislative Audit Commission, and there is a couple going through that AMSD sent me a note this weekend, and the deadline had already passed, but they wanted one on school choice, a legislative audit on that. And they came up with what wanted to be reviewed. So you might want to check that out with AMSD because if you want certain part of things in that study, that would be helpful. And then also, the levy referendum issue was another thing that was put out. I'm just trying to think of what ones related to education. And this isn't necessarily K-12, but students are applying when they're seniors. And that is for doing an assessment on the state grant program for helping students pay for college. pay for college. So, I became the chair of the Legislative Audit Commission Project Selection Committee. And it's a wonderful committee to be on because we get valuable information that helps us shape legislation and move legislation forward. So, if you ever have anything, ideas that you'd like our Legislative Auditor, they, they really take a deep dive. They can subpoena if they need to. They've only had to do it like once in their 30 years. But they get access to information that helps people to be able to make better decisions and be more informed. So, if you ever have any ideas, you as a school board and a pub, anyone in the public can make recommendations.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for making the effort to get here. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's like, should I stop, should I not stop? So, thank you for letting me come in after my time was assigned.
Nope, appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you for all your service.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next up would be our upcoming capital projects. Brian?
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I have a brief update on our 2019 summer capital projects. As always, our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This presentation this evening is just an informational presentation to give the board an update on the upcoming capital projects. And there'll be some governance action needed in the future for these, as you'll see when we get to that. So, for this, this summer, summer of 2019, the three main projects that we're looking at are our high school track and that will be funded through our capital projects levy. In the next presentation, it'll be mentioned again as we were talking, we'll be talking about the capital projects levy as a whole. And the next project, North Park Elementary Roof, Section B. Section B doesn't really mean anything, but there's a section of the roof at North Park Elementary that through our long-term facilities maintenance plan is up. And it's also very leaky, so it is definitely time. It's not a section of the roof that will be touched in our bond referendum project. So, we want to try to get that taken care of this summer when we're gearing up for the major construction and just get that out of the way right away. Again, because it is a leaking roof and, and actually, we just had them out and patched the roof again. They, you know, dug around some unit vents and, or some HVAC units on the roof and sealed it up because we had some leaks as the rain and the snow started melting. So, it's definitely something that we need to deal with. And then, Valley View Elementary Windows. This was something that was discussed before the project got pushed off a year. As you know, we've replaced, or may know, we've replaced Highland Elementary windows, we replaced the high school windows. More recently, we replaced Columbia Academy windows. We're going to start addressing windows at North Park Elementary through the bond referendum. And so, Valley View Elementary still has original windows to the building. So, those will be starting to be addressed this summer. And in phase one, it'll be two-phase approach. So, high school track, rough schedules. So, call to bid at March 27th, 26th meeting. Bid opening April 18th and board action on hopefully an approved final bid on June 11th so we can get this construction done this summer. And so, we'll be looking at July, August to complete the track. And we have a good timeline, working with the activities department on the needs, talking about not just the track surface, but the long jump, triple jump runway, the need for a second one, pole vault runway, and then the area where the high jump is as well. So, really looking at all those surfaces. Plus, we don't currently have an area, appropriate area for our shot put. So, putting a pit there. So, the kids are pushing the shot puts out, not into the grass and making divots in the grass, but they actually have a pit for that. So, very excited about finally getting to this project. And again, this is capital projects levy dollars. So, that's kind of our timeline we're looking at for the track. It will, we should have no problem being done before football season starts, so it doesn't affect that. Again, I've been working with athletic department, making sure that our schedules match. So, and it won't affect anything this spring just because we won't be able to get anything going that early. North Park Elementary Roof will also have an action item called to bid on March 26th. We need to really get going on this, as with all of our projects, to make sure that we can get them done this summer. I highlighted in red at the top, this, that technically is, so the section in green is the section that's leaking. And that's the section that we absolutely have to replace. The other section, potentially in a long-term facilities plan, we would wait another two, maybe three years. But that whole, both those sections together have solar panels on them. And we have to move the solar panels. So, since we're moving the solar panels, we want to do both sections at the same time so we don't have to move the solar panels again in two years. So, it's just, it's an efficient way of doing it so we're not expensing extra resources again in two years to move those solar panels again. So, we'll move all the solar panels at once. We should have no problem completing both those sections in time and under budget for the school year to start. And then, the elementary, our Valley View Elementary Windows, again, called to bid March 26th. So, we'll be asking for approval to publish the bids, or the bid. And we'll have board review on April 18th and then board action on May 24th to approve the winning bid and so that, again, we can move forward. And again, this will be a two-phase project. And for windows, it's more than just the windows, it's the storefronts themselves. So, as you can see on the picture here, the, the front doors of the building and the windows associated with it, that's all one piece, that's one storefront. And we'll be looking at, we haven't finalized our phased approach for that yet and what's going to make the most sense, whether we do one section of windows on the building, we do just the storefronts this fall, how that's going to work. A lot of it's going to depend on, on, you know, really what we can get for materials and how big a piece we can bite off this fall. But primarily, the biggest part of Valley View Windows will happen the following summer. So, phase one will be much smaller than phase two. So, those are the three capital projects for the summer. Any questions on those?
Anybody have questions? Okay, we'll move on to the annual capital project levy update.
Can I just ask one question? When you say we need, we're going to need some approval or there's going to be some governance, would that be at the next meeting?
Yes, so, March 26th, we need approval to call for bid. And once we call for bid, we'll publish those bids. You know, hopefully, we'll have a meeting, we'll bring potential people in to bid that out. They'll get information on it, they'll submit their bids, and then we'll be bringing those bids to the, to the school board for, for action. And so, that'll, those will be, those will be two action governance pieces in the near future. Again, the 26th, because we have to get going, we have to get these advertised. And then, it'll vary a little bit on when we'll, we'll be asking for, when you'll, you'll receive the information of the bids and then we'll be asking for approval on awarding a bid. Yep. Okay. So, again, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I have Director of Finance Denise Sunstrom with me. And this is our annual report on, our update on our capital projects levy. And we'll kind of go through a review of, of what the bullet points are, of what fits into these expenses, what we went to the community for, kind of a history of the last couple of years of what we've spent the money on, so the projects that we've done, and then a look at our future projects. So, again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So, a reminder that our capital projects levy passed in 2014, has 60% of the funding going to facilities and 40% of the yearly funding going to technology. So, the capital projects levy included, for the 60% for facilities, included replacing, repairing roofs, windows, doors, plumbing, and casework. Casework being the cabinets in the classrooms. Replacing or repairing furnaces and boilers, repairing water damage and siding, brick tuck pointing, always a fun conversation, reservicing athletic track, as I just talked about, improving signage, and repairing parking and driveways. So, just stepping back a couple of years, and, and one thing of note on the capital projects levy update is some of these things, actually, a lot of these items cross over two fiscal years. So, it can get a little confusing because we're expensing some of it and, because we start the project in June, you know, and then July hits, fiscal year changes, and then, you know, we have July and August. So, that summer is really crossing over two fiscal years. And I have Denise to help make sure that we get the dollars in the right year. But, so, so some of these projects, actually, really, most of these projects cross over two fiscal years. So, in 1617, we did the parking and driveway reconfiguration at Valley View Elementary. We worked on tuck pointing at Columbia Academy. I think we can remember the, the upper structure of the gym was leaking and we had water pouring into locker rooms in the basement. And then, window work at Columbia Academy. In 2017, 18 school year, we boilers at Highland Elementary, a picture there of our pretty boilers. And then, windows, finishing the windows at Columbia Academy and then begin work on our domestic water lines at the high school. So, then, in, in this year, or beginning of this year, so July, August of this year, you know, we continued on the boilers at Highland Elementary. So, that project was finishing this fall, leading into the school year. And then, the domestic water lines in the high school, again, finishing, leading into this school year. So, our big projects for, from the capital projects, capital projects levy part are the track at the high school. And then, I put parking and driveway reconfiguration at North Park Elementary. You know, again, as you recall, the bullet points, I went through, parking and driveway reconfiguration was on there. We, we use capital projects levy dollars, both at Highland and at Valley View Elementary, Highland first and then Valley View Elementary. And we're, we're not going to be able to complete all of that work. And there are dollars in the bond referendum, but you remember, we're combining the bond referendum dollars with dollars we already had, our capital projects levy and our long-term facilities dollars for the whole project. And so, we're not doubling up, we're pooling those dollars together. And as presented at the work session, we talked about making that drive into the current play space slash bus drop-off space, that new drive-in. So, as construction sets off and we, we're taking an area off and fencing it off for construction, we'll use those dollars to create that. Now, you know, there's things that need to happen. We need to get approval for that, there's some work that needs to be done. But we would like that to be done this summer so that, you know, we have a more smooth process of drop-off and pickup and, and separation of the, the kids and the parents and the buses from that construction area and, and give a little bit of relief from the street as well. So, that's why that's included on there because we do have that desire and that need. So, capital projects levy, 40% technology, again, talking about bandwidth, having access for our students, improving parent-student portal technologies, increasing technology systems for safety and security, expanding network and infrastructure capacity for wireless access, acquiring technology devices. Of course, after we're acquiring all these technology devices, we need to have the infrastructure to support it. And if we have the infrastructure to support it, we need the bandwidth to be able to connect to the resources. And then, installing, replacing, supporting, and maintaining software-related training. So, again, just a history reminder, you know, approved in 2014. And really, our focus from a technologies perspective was our personalized learning initiative and that one, and, and one-to-one devices, grades three through 12. So, in 2017, 18, we were expanding, we expanded to grades four through 11. We added an additional technology integration staff person at that time to support the training for the teachers, the technology hardware, again, the one-to-one devices for grades four and 11. And then, professional development work, so training, being able to provide subs for teachers to be able to get that professional development. Now, it's, you know, of course, been a little challenging with sub shortages, but, you know, we, we still find ways. We have our district in-service days and we have our building days to be able to provide before and after-school staff development. And then, in 1819, we, this, this past, or this year, we expanded to grades four, or we continued grades four and then expanded to 12. And again, we continue that tech integration, supporting that tech integration staff person. And then, we, we've worked with adding some additional professional development programming. And I think at the end of the year, when we do our personalized learning update to the school board, we'll get more in-depth into that and what that looks like. We have a couple of new programs this year. And I put the pioneer group on there because I think that's been one of the best professional development groups from a technology perspective we've had in the district. So, I'm very happy and excited about the work that our team is doing there. And then, for next year, we're looking at, again, continuing that tech integration staff person and providing that professional development. And we're going to really start going after our classroom audiovisual systems, the projection screens that are in the sound systems that are in the classrooms. A lot of those are aging. We want to, we want to make some updates to that technology. And, and because we just have to add one classroom, you know, we'll have a little extra dollars this year to be able to do that. So, you know, we will be one-to-one devices, grades three through 12, which was our goal in expanding our personalized learning initiative. And so, now we'll start working on some of those tools that kind of come along with that. And obviously, over the next few years, we have to maintain that grades three through 12. So, we will continue to do that, but it's going to help that we're not expanding anymore, that we're just maintaining. And these are just a couple of pictures from, from professional development. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
I'd just like to remind anybody who's watching that this is a kind of a good means of making sure that we're just doing with the levy dollars what we said we would do. And if people want to look at it, it's always available on the website. I think all this stuff gets put up on the homepage. If you scroll down enough, it's right there to look at from all our years of spending. Yep.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. So, after this presentation, I'll work with Director Sunstrom and, and work with Director Stunkel and, and we'll make sure that we get the webpage updated as, as we just presented.
As Brian presented.
Thanks.
Thanks. And Denise supported. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on to our action items. First up would be the 2019-2020 calendar.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here this evening to present as an action item, the 2019-2020 calendar. This was presented as an information item at the March 5th, 2019 School Board Work Session. And District Administration met with the local 710 union president and received feedback regarding the calendar. A compromise was made with local 710 president, Daniel Honig, to have December 23rd, 2019 as a district in-service day and allow students and staff April 9th, 2020, off for a long weekend. In-service on December 23rd allows for students to be off and not have to attend school for one day and accommodates family winter break plans. Tonight, the district is seeking approval of the 2019-2020 school calendar.
Okay, start with a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? Discussion, questions, comments?
Just a comment of wanting to be thankful that our community is willing to make kind of these flexible changes for this coming year in the calendar to accommodate all of the really great construction projects we have. An acknowledgement that it's difficult to change and have like a temporary interruption to what people are used to, but being thankful to people for their flexibility, including the teachers and all the other unions that will have to flex a little bit from their norm, too, so.
Which, and, to build on that, is one of the reasons that, kind of what is the topic of, been the topic of conversation is what's happening to spring break next year. And things have been out there from, we're losing spring. And things have been out there from, we're losing spring break forever to a host of different comments. So for the record, spring break is shortened next year. And the reason for that, as Natty mentioned, is, is there are some timelines and some weather issues with the different building projects that we have coming up that were so generously approved by our, our residents and our community and our district. So it is, it's a growing pain, if you want to call it that. And the spring break is not gone forever, so. But there are some concessions that needed to be made in order to move the projects forward in a timely manner. So as Natty said, thank you for the people that were willing to sit down and have those conversations and compromises, so.
I think it's important also to note that the calendar committee is parents and community members and, you know, people that are involved and they all get together to-
Teachers' Union.
Teachers' Union. And, and there's requirements in terms of attendance days and in-service days and, you know, time off days and, you know, kind of when you put that all on a calendar and, and try to make it work. And I think, you know, there's, there's, you know, we have a little bit of a different calendar for next year. And as, I think, to echo Chair Larkin, it's, it's not permanent. We, we, we need to get the work done and have the appropriate time to be able to do that. And so I appreciate everybody kind of coming together, true, the true act of compromise. I think everybody gave a little and, and everybody's getting something, so, thank you.
And, school ends, I want to say, May?
May twenty-eighth.
In May twenty-eighth. So we're getting out significantly early as well.
Next.
For next year, yeah, not this year, in two thousand twenty. And that won't be the same either. That will most likely change and get a little closer to that week of June. So there was, just so we understand, we were just giving up spring break. There's, we should, the, the school year, the end of the school year changed as well, so, okay. Excuse me, anybody else, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Motion on the table is to approve the calendar for twenty nineteen twenty twenty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Chris. Next up is the pre-cast structural and steel bids authorization.
Good evening, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, Chair Larkin. We're excited to bring you the first bid package from our new bond referendum tonight. And it's exciting, it's pre-cast and structural steel and it's for the band room. So we are asking for board authorization to publish the legal notice for bids on pre-cast and structural steel.
Okay, start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Second.
Lauren, motion, Laura, second. Okay. Questions, comments, discussion? This is a request to go out for bits.
Correct.
Correct. And the bid opening will be on April second at two o'clock.
I have to comment on your excitement. Structural steel. We all give a knowing glance around the table like, woo-hoo.
It's our first. We're going to be here a lot.
Lauren is genuinely excited with you, for the record.
It's exciting and it's extremely important to the project.
Very necessary.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing nothing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Case. Next up would be a resolution of Board of Directors Certificate of Incumbency.
Thank you. This is necessary, this, this is only to change the signatures on the OPEB trust with Wells Fargo. That's all this is doing because I'm the new director. So this is to name Kathy, Kelly, and I, the people that can work with the Wells Fargo OPEB trust. So I'm asking for your approval of the attached OPEB trust resolution.
This is an actual resolution. Okay. Start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly got you.
Second.
Okay, Natty. And we'll read the resolution and then open it up for discussion. So is Molly and Natty. Okay. Whereas corporation is authorized to appoint Wells Fargo Bank in the Wells Fargo capacity as a trustee and corporations board directors has delegated certain functions to individuals to act on the corporation's behalf. It's resolved that the following are authorized entity representatives and are required in order to take such actions and execute such documents on behalf of the corporation with respect to its agreements with Wells Fargo. And the names on that are Catherine L. Kelly and Denise Sunstrom, Director of Finance and Superintendent. Resolve that Wells Fargo shall be fully protected by relying upon this resolution and shall be indemnified and held harmless for any and all claims, demands, expenses, losses, or damages, including reasonable attorney fees related to Wells Fargo's reliance on this resolution. It's resolved that this resolution shall be replaced and supersede any prior resolution on the subject in conflict herewith. I certify that I duly elected and qualified the corporate secretary authorized to certify the resolutions of the board that are above is true and correct, copy resolutions adopted by the board, and that said resolutions are in full force and effect and have not been replaced and amended. My further certified that the board by said resolutions has conferred on the authorized entity representatives whose names appear above full authority exercise the powers granted that the signature appearing opposite each authorized entity representative's name is his or her authentic official signature and that the authority of such persons may be relied upon until Wells Fargo receives further notice from me and that will be signed by the clerk, so. Okay, so that's the resolution. Any questions, discussion on that? That's a name change.
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Hearing, no further discussion. It is a resolution, so Laura, if you do a roll call, please.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next up would be transportation requests for proposal, the RFP.
Thank you. I have with me tonight Arlen Biding and he is from K-12 Transportation Management Services. And we are going to be presenting the transportation request for proposal results to you tonight. And also, it's an action item because we're going to ask permission to, we're going to ask permission for something at the end. Okay. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This transportation, RFP, the request for proposal started with you approving the process in January at the board meeting. And we were then allowed to go out for RFP, or request for proposals. This is not like a bid process. An RFP is, we solicit proposals and then we get to vet them and we have criteria that we use to go through the bidders, or not bidders, but the people making a proposal. So we did receive three proposals on February sixth, twenty nineteen. And Arlen has done all of the work on vetting them and I'm going to let him continue on now. I can hit the next button when you're ready.
Okay. Chairman Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, thank you for, for having me here to, to talk about transportation again with you. As Denise has reviewed our process, I'm, I'm here to kind of update you on where we are at in the direct discussions with the three, three service providers that presented proposals. That work's been done, again, since, since early February. My work with these organizations has been largely to review their proposals as presented, ask questions to clarify, to make sure there's an understanding that, that the district, we have a good understanding of what they've presented in their proposals. And, and certainly to share information with each of these providers, make sure that they understand the expectations of the district and the desire to develop strong partnership, the desire to establish quality service, safe service for our students. And that's been our, our goal. The discussions have been good. Sometimes they can be challenging on, on, it is, it is a competitive market and, but it's, I have to say that each organization has been very engaged and, and very interested in partnering with the district. The proposals were received, received from three, three companies. The first, a first proposal was, was received from Metropolitan Transportation Network, a locally-owned company based here in Fridley. Metropolitan Transportation Network, also referred to as MTN, currently has contracts in Minneapolis, neighboring District St. Anthony, and various charter schools here in the metro. MTN was a previous service provider to the district here in school year two thousand thirteen, fourteen. I apologize. Second proposal was received from Monarch Bus Services. Corporate offices is in Hastings. Monarch provides transportation to several districts in the metro area. They are a subsidiary of Minnesota Coaches, familiar company that we see, road coaches out throughout the state. You may have seen their, their buses, providing service to St. Paul School District, Minneapolis School District for many, many years, also charter schools throughout the metro area. Third proposal was received from Durham School Services, a national school bus company, a subsidiary of National Express located in Isle, Illinois. Durham has, currently operates under the name of Septran here in, in the metropolitan area, providing special needs service to the Minneapolis School District. Again, just want to review a few of the high points of, again, our, our discussions and our assessment of each of these proposals. Certainly, there's been input and, and evaluation at the administrative level here in the district concerning, again, the services required and expected by our, our families, our students, our staff in the district. So the, the proposals received were evaluated from that perspective. Key component of, of the relationship is the, the company itself, the nature of who they are, their ownership, corporate structure, those types of things can be very important in, in building the partnership that, that we really want. So we looked at the, the differences between the, the companies from that perspective. Certainly, their experiences, their references, and their service record, both currently and historically in, in the areas where these companies have operated is, is an important factor. Certainly, in, in proposals, a big component is, is the vehicles, age of vehicles, the type of vehicles that each company is proposing. And in, in this process, companies often do propose different types of fleets for the district to consider. Specifically for us and, and where we are transporting our students from, where the terminal is located in these proposals is a really key piece. In our current system, in the current facility, there are some service issues that are just built into where our buses come from and the routes they take to get to where our students reside, namely thirty-five W and, you know, coming from a northernly location to come into the district and our service areas to, to pick up and transport students. Lot, lot of deadhead, lot of variables in terms of traffic and, and potential delays. So that was a key component of evaluating the proposals. So, coming up to current, we are here tonight to recommend that the district consider directing us to enter into direct negotiations to establish a contract with Monarch Bus Service. Want to highlight a few of the, the components of, of Monarch's proposal for you. It certainly meets or exceeds the specification requirements that, that were set out at the beginning of this process. Their two-year cost projection currently meets district expectation, budget expectations. Some of the added value components of Monarch compared to some of, compared to the other proposals. Again, local ownership of this organization is, is really a preferred, preferred posture for the district to be partnering with, with a local, locally-owned organization. National ownership, national companies can have their benefits, but there certainly can be challenges to trying to work together with an organization when key members of that, that organization are, are somewhere across the country. The Monarch's favorable service history, both current and historic in our, in local school districts was a key component of their proposal. Establish local management and operations personnel. And the next bullet, establish local pool of, of school bus drivers and paraprofessionals. Again, this is a key component in the current labor market. Labor, labor market conditions aren't, aren't surprising to anyone. It's especially a concern for a new organization to come and partner with the district, that there's local drivers here, there are local paraprofessionals, there's local management teams that are here and in place and that will be a, a real component of, of a successful transition from our current service provider to a new provider. Monarch has been flexible in, in their discussion on their fleet, the vehicles that are needed for our students in our particular service. And they're, they really have a preferred terminal location. And just to generally describe, their terminal is located, the quarry area, which is roughly the, 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 kind of northeast from downtown Minneapolis. For our buses coming from a terminal located there, we are significantly eliminating deadhead miles, we are significantly eliminating some traffic, or delays and potential delays from, from traffic delays, construction delays from what our current system, current system design. So in, in working with this new terminal location, we will be able to do some different routing scenarios and strategies that will really help us, again, reduce deadhead time, reduce fuel costs, actually do some different things on ride times for our students as And then, again, they're local, they're, locally, there are multiple locations that, that are operated by this organization. And I only point that out that in, in the metro area, and this is kind of a general market perspective, when there are companies that have multiple locations, those other locations become an added resource to the facility that is servicing our district in terms of additional staff if there is a, you know, a daily shortage or a short-term shortage due to illness or job vacancies, those types of things. It's a real added, added value for working with a, a company that has multiple locations here in the metro area. So our next steps, and I think there's maybe a correction to this slide, again, we're looking for your direction or approval to move forward to establish final contract language and prepare a contract to be brought back to, to the board for approval and execution. We think that will be, we, we plan that that would be April ninth. There's an opportunity for us, if need be, either your request or our need, to come back at the next school board on the twenty-sixth for either clarification or questions. With that, I'll, I'll stand for questions.
Okay, start with the motion on a second, if you could.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Holly? Okay, questions, comments, conversation?
I guess I have one question. It's a little bit more of a general question and I think maybe for folks that are watching that don't know. Arlen, can you just maybe even share just very briefly what your role is and, and, you know, your expertise in, in going through this process with us?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure. I, I work for- I work for, I wear the hat of transportation director here in the district. I work with a company called K-12 Transportation Management Services. The district has a contract with our company to oversee all aspects of transportation. So, in recent, we've been here in partnership with you for the last little over a year, approximately. We came on board with a staff retirement, and part of those services, so for example, we have kind of a team approach to transportation. So there are three, two to three people on staff at K-12 Transportation, myself, Matt, a route coordinator, and then a routing person, Juanita. We're the team that oversees and works on transportation on a day-to-day basis. We talk with parents in the district, we talk with staff at the buildings, we work with the bus contractor to work through day-to-day transportation situations. Part of that contract is assistance with this type of process to work with the district to initiate, conduct work together with the district on this procurement process and bring what our perspective, we work in probably 30-plus different school districts in, primarily in the metro area, but outstate as well. So, we bring a larger perspective on transportation to the district here, so that, sometimes that's a helpful perspective for the district.
It's very helpful. And we have coverage from 6:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night, where we had one person internally before. So his team is always there, so, yeah.
Thank you. And I think it's just important, like you said, especially for folks that are watching at home, maybe to kind of understand your perspective in that, you know, K-12 Management Services, I mean, transportation's what you do, and getting kids to and from school is what you do. And as you said, you're doing this for 30 districts roughly throughout our area, so you're managing and reviewing other contracts for other schools, and so you know kind of what to look for, what competitive pricing may be, you know, how things are in line. So you provide that perspective as really our consultant on this matter to make sure that we're getting the best service at the most affordable rate.
We really value the last year that we've been here and had the opportunity to get to know the community and the school district and the needs. We hope we're moving in the right direction. We know there's work to do, there's always improvement, and we're thankful and glad to be partnering with the district in this area.
Thank you.
So tonight, you're just requesting permission to enter into negotiations for the contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, anybody else have any questions or discussion? Okay, motion on the table is to allow them to enter into negotiations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Okay, next up will be a closed session in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03. The board will meet in a closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategy. Coming out of closed session at 8:54, we were in a closed session in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03, the board met in a closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies. So we're open, open session. Anybody have anything for board topics?
I do, actually. Just really quick.
Go ahead.
The subcommittee on community engagement, boy, that was tough to get out. I just wanted to share a little bit of our, kind of our meeting notes. We did reach a definition of community engagement, which is an ongoing process of two-way communication between the school board and the communities it serves. And we wanted to focus on the areas of ongoing and two-way in terms of our communication as well as highlight our communities, which, you know, and that's plural on purpose, to reflect our staff, students, taxpayers, parents, resident stakeholders for the district. And, you know, the, what we're working on now is really kind of coming up with, we've done our definition, and we've done some research, and we've talked to other districts, and now we're looking at brainstorming some ways of what community engagement looks like for our board. So that'll be our next meeting.
Exciting. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have anything for board topic? If not, we will adjourn this meeting at 8:56. Thanks, everybody.